I need a motion for the approval of order of agenda, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Christine?
Thank you. We will approve the minutes from the last meeting. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held April 20th, 2021.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment speakers will be recognized who wish to address the board on agenda items only. It's probably a little early for that. So then we will start with our Students of the Month and who are we starting with?
Bays, Mr. Clemmenson, Mr. Springer, board members. We are here to present the April Student of the Month for Hampton Bays Elementary School. I'd like to ask one of my teachers to please come up and join me, Mrs. Jocelyn.
Welcome, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. Mrs. Jocelyn told me this is her 35th Student of the Month and the best one she has ever presented. Please help me in welcoming our Student of the Month Daniela Aguero. Daniela!
Okay. This is for you. Come here.
Great job. Daniela is very attentive and enthusiastic in class. She's a wonderful student and she's always eager to learn. She loves math. Adding is her favorite. She is always responsible, helpful, and kind to everyone in class. Daniela always participates during class and group discussions and always gives her all-around best with written work. Daniela works to her potential and always wants to please her teachers. She is very patient and kind to her classmates. Always helps them with their Chromebooks if they need any help completing work. Daniela loves to travel with her family and she loves her dog, Max. Her favorite animal is a unicorn because they are colorful and they are soft. She likes to dance outside of school and do gymnastics and one day hopes to be a dance teacher when she grows up. We are so proud of Daniela's growth in all areas this year in second grade. We are proud to have nominated Daniela for April's Student of the Month. There is no one who deserves it more. Congratulations, Daniela.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce April's Student of the Month for Hampton Bays Middle School, sixth grader Eileen Mercedes. Congratulations, Eileen. Here's what Eileen's teachers had to say about her. Eileen is a wonderful, hard-working student that is a friend to everyone. Eileen makes school a priority that is evidenced by her strong work ethic. Online and in person, she always gives 100%. One of the most amazing things about Eileen is her kindness to all of those around her. Warm, friendly, and caring. It is without reservation, she is an outstanding candidate for Student of the Month. Congratulations. So during our interview, I learned some amazing things about Eileen, who came to us as a new student in fifth grade just last year. Eileen told me she has appreciated how much her teachers care about her and how our school doesn't seem to tolerate bullying. Her favorite class this year is science, where she's learning about cells, plants, and animals, and she's been amazed at how the different parts play such an important role in pollination. Eileen is bilingual, English and Spanish, and is excited to be teaching herself to speak Japanese using Duolingo. We already have her signed up to attend our foreign language club and to talk to our three foreign language teachers who speak a combined 11 different languages, not counting English. In her spare time, she enjoys spending time with her best friend, who happens to be a fellow sixth grader and former Student of the Month. No coincidence, they're friends. Together, they play Roblox. Eileen plans to play volleyball in the future as well. While Eileen is in no rush to grow up or to attend college, she does aspire to be a Japanese instructor as well as an artist. In her words, anime is satisfying to her. She draws in pencil as well as with her devices and is planning to save and purchase an Apple pen for herself to do more art using the computer. She also loves scary books and recommends we explore the horror genre. I'm not so sure about that for me. Her advice to fellow new students is to never give up and to feel good knowing we are in a welcoming school where there are nice students and teachers. Congratulations, Eileen. We are also proud of you at HBNS.
Good evening, parents, students, the Board of Education, Mr. Clemmenson, and fellow colleagues. This Student of the Month nomination came from Health Physical Education Department. I'm pleased to announce that the recognition goes to James Kiernan. It has been a pleasure to be able to recognize numerous students in the past, but I have to say that James is a young man who is so humble to speak about his accomplishments that I had to use my best investigative techniques to shine some light on him. First of all, James is a young man who gravitates to sports and naturally is very athletic. As we know, COVID has really hurt athletic programs, but more importantly, it hurts students who find their strength in athleticism. James participated in track this year and he expressed how much gratification he found in ability to run, as well as participated in spring tennis. James' natural athleticism is what Physical Education and Health Department have noticed about him. It is his ability to tune in into whatever unit of sport is being presented and the attention that he put into it. He's respectful, hard-working, and a true team member. Those character traits were noticed and he is now being recommended for a physical educational leadership position. A physical education leadership position is the opportunity to work alongside physical education teachers in assisting students in their classes. But it's not all about athletics for James. He aspires to major in business and is taking college economics and college accounting next year. In terms of colleges, he was adamant that he wants to go south. So University of Georgia or Virginia Tech are his top choices. We at Hampton Bays High School are looking forward to James' senior year and his postgraduate plans, and we will cheer alongside as he lights passions take place. Congratulations to James. Come on down and get your plaque.
Thank you.
All right, just get your plaque.
We do. Mr. Richard.
It is my pleasure and honor to introduce Alexis Phillips from the class of 2021. In my 25 years working in education, I have never had a nominee for the Presidential Scholar Program, which was established in 1964 to honor our most distinguished high school graduates. So Alexis is being nominated for some pretty impressive accomplishments. So Alexis, why don't you come on down for a second? Stay with me. Here are a little certificate for you. Now, let me start by saying that service is in Alexis's blood and in every way she performs. So she's a member of the Youth Core Program at the town of Southampton. She volunteered with the Special Olympics. What would really drive in her is the program that she is in at the Dixmont Technical Center. She's in the Licensed Practical Nursing Program where she is excelling in every sense of the word. She was one of our Employees of the Month, which is a designation that provides for leadership in that program. So she's inspired to help others by serving in the healthcare field. Here in Hampton Bays, she's a varsity athlete. She's going to be graduating with a regional diploma with the Advanced Designation. She's taking college pre-med. She's on honor roll. She can literally do it all. So she is again one of the top students in the state, being recognized for career in technical education, and we could not be more proud. Congratulations.
So also her birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Alexis. This nomination among the top students in New York State in Career in Technical Education, in the top five of all Career in Technical Education programs in all of New York State. So to say that this is a remarkable honor couldn't be truer, and I think it's the first for many of us to have this tremendous honor. So we're very, very proud of you and the work that you're doing. So Bosie's claims you, but you're really a Bayman, so we claim you firstly. Congratulations and happy birthday.
Yeah, congratulations.
Do you want to take a three-minute break?
Sure. You're welcome to stay with us, or they can take you out to a nice birthday there. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you. Amy, thanks for that help. Congratulations.
Bye. Take care.
Happy birthday.
Okay. We are now going to move on to Mr. Clemmenson.
Okay, good.
Presentation and report.
Good evening, board members and community members joining us remotely tonight. I'd like to start my report by saying that we just finished up a week of recognition for public education and a number of groups that we want to certainly thank. Our principals for leading this year, leading their buildings, keeping the lights on and doors open. It has always been a figurative phrase, but a real practical one this year, a real actual one. Keeping the doors open was not a given, and so we thank them. It's National Principals Day on May 1st. May 4th was National Teachers Day, Teacher Appreciation Day. So we thank our teachers for their doing navigating this year and every year. And then on Thursday was Nurse School Nurses Day, and our nurses have been also remarkable doing what they do day in, day out, which is always a busy place to be, the school nurse's office. During a global pandemic, it turned out it's even busier. So they have continued, they have tested, they've assisted with vaccines, they contact trace, they symptom assess, and so it was a real week to celebrate the contributions of those three groups. So I thank you for that. I'll just put our favorite slide up here to show, mostly because I'm proud of my clipart skills with Valve, but to show that we continue to be in Phase 3. We continue to have a seat in school in person for any child who wants it. We have roughly 13% of our students who are learning fully remotely at this time. That is down from a high of 35%, 34% that we had at the height of this year. So it is great to hear noise and see kids and feel the energy of the building. Not fully normal yet, but we're getting there. When you look at the case tracker, here's how you know we're getting there. It is May 11th and we have not had a COVID case since April 30th. That's the first time we've had an 11-day stretch since October 14th. So that's good news. You can see on the red mountain that we're coming, that we hit again our high-water mark of average daily cases on February 5th. At that point, we're averaging one a day, but we continue to move down. We're at about .82 per day now as we look towards the end of the year. So that feels good. It's summer, we're getting into spring and summer. Doors are open, windows are open, we're outside, and hopefully that is, you know, we know COVID-19 is a cyclical virus and it's showing true right now as we continue to ride this wave. You can see where those spikes are. Average cases for a weak January, we were right up there at the top, and we continue to come down. So not much more to say than that on COVID-19 right now. Vaccinations, the federal government approved vaccines for 12 to 15-year-olds for Pfizer. We don't currently have any plans to run any additional vaccine pods in the district, but Southampton College, Stony Brook Southampton College takes walk-ins at this point for the Pfizer vaccine. So we've been messaging that. It is a big mobilization effort to get a pod going, and so if we're right up the road, we'll see, we'll keep sending people there. I'm going to pivot now away from COVID, talk about post-COVID world and sort of a reengineering of field trips. We were talking about this through the closure in the spring and then into the year, looking ahead to what happens when we can get kids on a bus again and also account for some of the big benchmark trips that were missed as a result of the pandemic. I'm not going to go line by line through this, but you can get a sense for we believe in field trips, we invest in field trips, our families invest in field trips and fundraising to get kids out and see the world. And we're going to start to see a couple of changes in where we schedule opportunities for kids, starting in seventh grade. So currently in seventh grade, students go to Frost Valley with a college visit to Maris College up in Poughkeepsie. The current eighth graders attended Frost Valley because it was a November field trip, so it was before the closure in the 1920 school year, but the current seventh graders did not. So proposing to move Frost Valley to eighth grade starting next year, Mrs. Dayton is the class advisor who's building that, building us towards Frost Valley for our current seventh graders when they rise to eighth grade to go to Frost Valley in Maris. Now, Washington DC, which was for about 15 years, a benchmark trip in eighth grade, proposing to move that to 11th grade in 2023. So no DC for a little while. The current 10th graders, who will be 11th graders next year, went to DC when they were eighth graders. The current ninth graders did not go to Washington DC because of the closure. It was actually that first week was the first thing that was canceled in March of 2020. So the current ninth graders didn't attend Washington DC, and neither did the current eighth graders. So that would be something to look forward to. Mr. Richard and Dr. Greenberg are working with the Social Studies Department to put together a curricular experience there. They study US history, kids study US history in 11th grade, and so what better place to go than Washington DC? So we'll focus, doing this serves to give kids experiences, but then also to space out some of the pricier trips, because some of these trips do cost some money that require fundraising or parent or student contribution. So spreading them out a little bit more gives kids some breathing room to work and fundraise and kind of drive towards these trips. So this summer, we'll put some more meat on the bone to this proposal, but I wanted to give you a sense of what we're talking about at this point. Great news out of Stony Brook University. Today, we received a grant, we received notice that we are the recipient of a grant for $32,500. Mr. Carlson has been navigating this partnership, this budding partnership with Stony Brook University and former managing editor of Newsday, Howie Schneider. This Center for News Literacy is run at the Department of Journalism at Stony Brook, and the goal is to help students develop the ability to critically consume information, to identify misinformation, to critically consume where they're getting their information from, and make informed decisions based on real information. Digital age poses lots of challenges. Some studies have claimed that misinformation and disinformation on social media can travel six, up to six times faster and more widespread than real information on social media. And so teaching kids this skill, how to discern information, is important. $32,500 will go to curriculum writing, assessments, summer professional development, and a program for families to be engaged in this. It's going to start at the middle school and grow all the way up to the high school. So looking forward to working with Stony Brook University on this. We'll be called what's, we will be what's called the Lighthouse District. It's like we were made for this because we have a lighthouse at the middle school. So it couldn't be a better match, wearing some good company with some other great school districts on Long Island and being a lighthouse district with Stony Brook. So congratulations to the teachers who are embracing this. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for shepherding this through as well. We're looking at summer 2021 that starts to feel a little bit more like summer 2019 with kids in the building through summer program, summer programming. When you look at the slide that's before you there, there's a lot that goes on in the summertime. So from kindergarten screening, which was a COVID response last year, right? Turned out to be a great opportunity to just put the kindergarten teachers in the elementary school for a week in July and focus on meeting just the incoming class of kindergarteners. It was a home run. The teachers loved it. Mr. Meyer, Mr. T loved it. So instead of doing it in the hustle and bustle of the school year, sometimes that's overwhelming for little ones as they come in and parents as they come in, so we'll get that done. Summer school, K through 12, garden enrichment using our Kindergarten Scope after-school summer fun. We love our partnership with Scope and we're expanding it this year. Parents can pay to have a 12 to 4 summer fun session. We have a couple of community organizations that'll also be scholarshiping kids in so that there's not only childcare for them, but they have an enriching activity to do. We'll have sports camps, music. Southampton Town Police Academy is going to run, Southampton Police is going to run a youth academy here at the high school for one week for Hampton Bays students. There's a motion tonight to waive the room usage fees that I'll ask for your support on because their instructors are coming in to teach our kids. So in my mind, this is a Hampton Bays program and Southampton Town Police has been great partners with us. So summer continues to be big. Just a number of other miscellaneous items that I throw on this last slide here before I quickly talk about the budget, which you've heard for several weeks now. A couple of miscellaneous items. There'll be no school on Friday, May 28th. There's an expected snowstorm that day, so we'll be using our third and final snow day. No remote instruction, traditional day off the Friday before Memorial Day. Want to recognize Jordan Adelson and Tara Broshu, who this weekend were identified in the top 100 of Newsday's baseball and softball players. So it's a remarkable accomplishment when you consider 124 school districts on Long Island, and they're among the very best that we have. We're super proud of them. They're great kids as well. Grade 3 to 8 math and ELA testing went off without a hitch. It was a little bit of an odd year, a scaled-down version based on what the New York State required of us, so thank you to Mr. T and Mrs. Fox and their teams and partners in the building for executing that testing. AP testing is underway. That's why you see Dr. Greenberg with the treads on because she's all around the building with our AP testing going on. AP Seminar, AP Seminar is our newest AP program, and so we're getting into our first round of AP testing there as well. Next Monday, next Friday, we'll have our enlisted and military academy recognition ceremony partnering with Southampton and West Hampton Beach to recognize a total of 10 students who are enlisting in the military or attending a military service academy. They'll be held at Agawam Park at Southampton's turn to host, so our band will be going over there to participate in that ceremony along with our five students who will be enlisting in the military. That same day, we'll zip right back across the canal and recognize Tara and Katerina as our valedictorian and salutatorian with Assemblyman Field and Senator Palumbo. That's a Zoom event, but we'll have a watch party and a nice opportunity for the Lothar and Reich families to come and join us. Class of 2021 end-of-year activities, that's really what's on so many people's minds because we want to feel as normal in celebrating our kids as possible. So number of these items and June in general continues to still be in development. Capacity limits are changing, COVID requirements for testing, and immunization continue to evolve and change, but the news is that, the good news is that it's changing and moving in that right direction. So we'll have senior prom at Oakland. Thank you to Stephanie and the Oakland family for opening their doors and saying we want to do this. We'll have our varsity dinner on June 9th. We won't be at Georgios this year, we'll be at East Winds. And then we have fourth grade celebration and field day for Moving Up on the 16th, Moving Into Grade Eight Awards Night, and a week of June 21st, lots of events, some flexibility built in for rain dates and such. But at this point, we're looking at commencement, two ceremonies, but we might be able to get one in there with some attendance restrictions on the number of tickets that are allowed. We're going to maximize, here's the commitment, we're going to maximize the guidance. So whatever it says, we're going to go to exactly what it says. So we're not going to say, well, it says 100, but we're going to do 75. We want to be as normal as possible. Mr. Richard sleeps with the guidance under his pillow, so he knows exactly what it says. And we'll continue to evolve and communicate with families. That's the message, evolve, evolve, evolve. It's still only May 11th. The school budget proposal, nothing has changed on these slides since the budget hearing or the April, April school board meeting. There is a proposed school tax levy increase of 0%. The tax levy will not increase. We expect taxpayers will see a slight decrease in their school taxes. The assessed value, this is a small change, increased by approximately $8 million. In April, it was anticipated that it would be $22 million. However, a law changed where the properties that are owned by LIPA have come off the tax roll, and so that brought the assessed value down by, down about $14 million, right? So that doesn't, it still shows an assessed value increase in Hampton Bays. The tax levy increase stays flat. We expect that, we are told by the town of Southampton that assessed values of homes will stay unless you did new construction. So we expect that taxpayers with a 0% tax levy increase will see a slight decrease in their school taxes. The proposed budget is a 3.8% increase for a budget of $57 million, $57.3 million. You can see on this revenue slide that it breaks out a little bit more specifically on what that $57 million budget entails. Under the, they call this below the line. Below the total line is our pre-kindergarten grant, so you see a big increase in our pre-K grant. The pre-K monies that came as a result of the New York State enacted budget are for full-day pre-kindergarten. At this time, based on the restrictions of size and how many kids could fit into a full-day program, we are planning to run our half-day programs as normal next year. So that's what Mr. Meyer, Mr. T are going to draw 33 spots in the lottery tonight. We continue to work with our community-based organizations. When the Board of Education 10, 12 years ago committed to pre-kindergarten, they were mindful of not increasing taxes on the community and also respecting the community businesses that provide pre-K and nursery school services. That hasn't changed. You all haven't told me that's changed, and so that's still the value system that we work with. So we are going to walk as fast as we can, but as slow as we need to, to utilize this money. It's not a do-or-die type of thing. Tomorrow, we have to use it. The state is flexible, the state knows it's late in the calendar year. We're going to expand when we can, where we can, in partnership with our community. But as of right now, no plan changes to our September But as of right now, no plan changes to our September pre-K program. Two rooms right here at the high school, an AMP, an AM session in both rooms, and a PM session in both rooms with our partner, Scope, and just kids. The next few slides, they'll be posted, but I'll go through them very quickly. Shows the tax, tax levy increases and the budget increases year to year. So, in the last 10 years, we averaged about a 2% tax levy increase, right in line with the 2% tax gap, right? This year, that number is zero. That's why you don't see a purple line there. Budget increases an average of just under 2.5% spending increases. That was largely driven by the big jump this year because of the large increase in state aid. State aid as a portion of our budget is about 11%. That's because it was pulled up by the 15% state of state aid that we received this year. So, the $57 million budget, 15% of that comes from New York State. Every dollar that doesn't come from, that comes from New York State as one that doesn't have to come from the property taxpayer, hence the 0% tax levy increase. You could see the budget past history as well, dating back to 2000 there. I put that slide on there to remind everybody that coming out to vote is important. Your vote is your own. Your vote is a secret ballot, but participating in the vote is very important. We have seen from 2000 to 2020, at a time where our community and population has increased, our voting population has decreased to a low in 2019 of 800 voters. Typically higher by about three times that in our highest years. So, coming out to vote is important. The budget went up because the spending went up, but the taxes didn't go up because of a large increase in state aid. New York State is making the commitments to fully fund its foundation aid formula, which is the state formula that drives state aid to school districts. We were the fourth lowest-funded school district for foundation aid as a percentage of what we were owed in New York State. So, on Long Island, we received the largest increase in state aid, 46% increase in state. That large increase is a great, great news. However, we're still only 60% fully funded. At 100%, this makes, you see the steam on Larry's head coming up right now? I see it every day. The states made the commitment in three years to get to 100%. If that commitment is honored, that is going to continue to be good news in terms of programs we can offer for kids and relief to the property taxpayer. We can do multiple things with that increased investment. We have been around the block a few times together, right? So, we know not to take that check to the bank just yet. We know we have it for next year. We are not sure. It's written in the law, but as a student of social studies, we know you can write something out of the law if circumstances change, just as easy as it got in. So, the approach to this budget is a conservative approach. The increase in state aid is going to handle a number of one-time expenses that if the money doesn't materialize again for the following year, we've only done one-time expenses. We haven't committed to staff. We haven't committed to programming that we then have to draw back or dial back or freeze. This budget, in terms of a human resource perspective, adds three positions. A maintenance mechanic, two English as a new language teachers for the high school, and it does increase by 0.25% or 25% our nurse. We have one nurse who works part-time, and we're proposing making her a full-time to round out our nursing team. There's a couple of other driving factors in there, including the cost and number of AP exams, and then some movement between budget lines about how we pay for technology. We used to lease it. Now, we'll just purchase it straight up, and it saves you, saves a little bit on the financing piece. And then, in the transportation, capital debt, benefits, and capital projects, you see a bigger increase because that's where the one-time capital expenses live for next year. Spend a moment on this before we get into the, to the business of the agenda and then the PK lottery with Mr. Meyer and Mr. T. But the voting information for next week is that the budget and Board of Education vote will take place on May 18th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in middle school gym. COVID precautions will be taking, will be taking place, so you'll be safe. It'll be sanitized. It'll be clean. Those who are uncomfortable coming through the gymnasium to vote but still would like to participate, COVID is a legitimate reason to request an absentee ballot. You can do that with the link that's on this slide. You can go to our website, or you can call Mrs. Pandolfo, our district clerk. We'll get your absentee ballot application, which then you have to fill out in order to get, so we can verify your registration, and then the ballot can be sent to you. Three propositions to authorize the school budget for 2021. Proposition 2 is to authorize the use of up to $3.5 million to replace the elementary school roof. Three years ago, the community voted to start that savings account. The law says we now have to ask permission to take that money out for the purpose that we said and the community agreed to. So, that's what we're doing so that we can make, Mr., we can make the elementary school a little noisier than it normally is by building and banging on a new roof in the summer to come. And then, the third proposition has lived on our ballots for years, authorize the use of up to $300,000 of undesignated and unreserved funds from this school year for miscellaneous repairs, renovation to the facility. The last day to register to vote and participate in Tuesday's election is Thursday, May 13th. This is Pandolfo. To have that conversation if you are not sure if you registered to vote. In addition, voters will participate in the Board of Education election. There are two seats available to the top vote getters. Individuals can vote for up, up to two candidates. Ann Colhane, Liz Scully, and Rich Ionelli are all running for office. Mrs. Colhane and Mrs. Scully are seeking a reelection to the Board of Education, and Mr. Ionelli, post-retirement, seeks a first term of education. That is our information tonight for my report. At 6 o'clock tonight, the district held to meet the candidates tonight. That link will be posted on our website tomorrow, so you can get a sense for what these candidates' visions for the district are, what they're proud of, and how to contact them if you have any additional questions. Members, I'll take any questions from you on tonight's report.
Anybody think we're good?
Thank you.
Quick question. As of, just as of today, I know it's pending, but if we're doing two graduations, how is it being broken up? Alphabetical?
It's most likely alphabetical. Yep, that's the cleanest way. There's winners and losers there. We're hoping for one. We're hoping for one under a tent. The COVID guidelines vary. We'll visit Mr. Richard at night with, he puts it under his pillow, so hopefully it'll change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmerson. Does Mr. Luth have anything this evening? Okay. We will move to business and finance, and we will do a consent agenda from 4A to 4B. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Student Services is by itself, 5A. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel from 6A, consent agenda from 6A to 6L. If no questions, I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. It's a big one. All right. 7, except from 7A to 7D. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I think we're going to go to Mr. Meyer now with our kindergarten.
Yep.
Lottery.
Hey, Mrs. Spring.
Mr. Meyer, nice to see you, sir. How are you?
Good too, sir. Thank you. Our pre-K program, something we're very proud of, something that we're excited every year, get a chance to come in, get to talk a little bit about it, and we'll be more than, we get a chance to introduce everybody's favorite new students in Hampton-based school district. We love all our students, but our pre-K students are always our favorites. We could list hundreds of things about pre-K, the positive things about pre-K. Two most important, getting our students ready for kindergarten, giving our students a chance to get ready for kindergarten. And secondly, actually giving parents a chance to re-enter the workforce on a least a part-time basis. So, our pre-K program really is a win-win for, a win for our students and a win for our parents. What kind of work is it doing? We're going to get going. Mr. T.?
Mr. Meyer, I just unsealed the 33 names that we entered into this lovely raffle machine. Mine is going to play, and then what I'm going to do is I'm going to spin it like the Wheel of Fortune to figure out who is the recipient of the number one draft for kindergarten. I will pick roughly five to six at a time to expedite the process. I'll write a number. I'll give it to the lovely Mrs. Pandolfo. She'll use your name, and then we will record it. Are we ready?
Ready.
Yeah. You know, I just did come back from college graduation, so it's a lot of enthusiasm. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. That sounds like a good number. Five.
I'm checking the.
One, we're done. Number two is Brianna Garzón.
Number three.
Number three is Hyah Feliz Domingo.
Say that again, Mrs. Pandolfo.
Number four.
Number four, Imena Sanchez.
Number five.
Number five, Kylie Ortiz. Number eight, Maya Mendes.
Number nine.
Number 10, Natalia Garcia. Number 12, Caroline Valentina. Number 13, Indy Blue Crook. Number 14 is Ellie Wilson. Number 15, Saria Nelson. Number 16, Gail Valdespino. Number 17, Scarlett Acevedo Arias. 22, Haley Simmons.
Number 33, Andrew Alvarez.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Pandolfo. We look forward to having Hampton Bay's newest students start with us in September. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys and girls. Okay. To the public comment, persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The Board President will recognize all speakers. Time limits will be imposed based upon agenda needs. Mr. Ferraro?
Nothing right now, just giving a minute.
All right. In that case, thank you all. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Congratulations to all our winners and our lottery graphics.